Okay. I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, July 16th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have members John Ashmead and Peter Tensing. I'm Chair Christine Malik. We have Superintendent Unowski. Crystal Brockie is out, and Paula Cole is out, and Tim Paulus will be arriving late. So I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. So we will start with...
Yes, sir.
For the sake of our viewers, if we have viewers, can we clarify why we're currently holding our meeting without a quorum?
Okay, so we have... We don't have enough... Essentially, we don't have a quorum, so we don't have enough people, so we can't approve the agenda or formally vote on anything. So we will start with information and proposals and non-action items, and we can discuss at this point, but we cannot vote.
At this point, we're engaging in informational presentation to the board as opposed to a formal board meeting.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I'm happy today to share with you Athletic Director Dave Boy. One of the things that we have been talking about as we look to communicate and market as an organization is the Spartan branding, or the Spartan rebranding. And so Athletic Director Boy is here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the things that he has been working on with a group of community members, doing some surveying. And his goal tonight is to engage the board in a little bit of conversation, gather some additional broad-based feedback, try to get a picture of where we have consensus, and then also try to get a picture of where some additional information is needed. So with that, Mr. Boy.
Great, thank you. So I guess I'll start with our committee. We certainly did as much as we could to get to collect from wide-ranging people in terms of different activities, different sports, different genders, including alumni in there as well, so we get a pretty broad-based representation. One piece missing in there was students. We just struggled to get students with their schedules to make it to our evening meetings. Had a couple, they didn't show up. We got a couple more, they didn't show up. But we obviously wanted their voice, and so we included that with a lot of surveys that we did with them, both at the high school and the middle school. Why rebranding? Again, as we talk about better communication within the district, within the community, we want to have something that we're known for. And so we're trying to standardize our uniform colors. I'll show you some examples of all of those in a little bit. Standardize our logo on our uniforms, on print materials, on our phone raising cards, anything that represents Richfield Schools, Richfield High School. You need to adjust with the times. So images that are high-resolution. Anytime we get uniforms, anything, they want high-resolution things that they can put them on. We currently don't have anything that fits that, and so whatever we end up with, we want it to be something that we can share with the people, that we can send to a printer, we can send to a embroidery company, and it can be done and done right. And then just have an opportunity to update our image and say, who are we, what are we about? Is this Richfield? And make sure that everybody's on it. And the third part would be the community use. Once we have something that we're able to share within the community, so it becomes something that our basketball, our swimming, our clubs, anybody that wants to use this, will have the option to use that and can share it with those people. So the process we went through as a committee, we worked with VIP branding, which is a... we entered into a contract with BSN, so part of that contract was getting access to VIP branding. So it's a company that basically claims $10,000 worth of... $10,000 worth of work that they're willing to do for us. We met as a committee multiple times. We did student surveys, both at the high school and the middle school, and then a lot of committee surveys in terms of back and forth with email, gathering feedback So one of the reasons we wanted to standardize our color is that just I just did a quick run-through of our equipment room and pulled out these three things. We have different color red. When you look around our district, you look around our programs, we have many different reds, and so we want to be able to say, what is the Richfield red? And clearly define that, so again, when we send it to printer, we send it, we get uniforms, we've got something that we know is our color. Big symbol is the R that you see. Again, you look around, you see a lot of different Rs and a lot of different things. Again, you can see just from a sample here, there's a lot of different Rs that are out in the community. And so again, if we have an R as a symbol, we want to say, this is our Richfield R. Same thing with the Spartan head, or the Spartan body, or depending on which one we'll get. But we want to be able to say, for the same reasons, this is our Spartan head. This is our symbol, this is what represents us. So we started working with a branding company, kind of looking at this, and just to kind of describe the process, what this company would do is, we would kind of give them ideas, they would send us back some artwork, and we would start that discussion in terms of, what is it that we're looking for? One of the big first discussions we had with the committee is, do we need a new Spartan head? I don't think there's an answer quite there yet, but at least we wanted to come up with, what's an alternative, what are our options on that? And so you kind of looked at different types of helmets. We went to the students and kind of again told them, these are not our final products, but if you had a choice right now, would you choose a closed helmet, open helmet, or no change? That was one thing that came out of the committee, is we wanted to get a sense of where the students are in terms of, are they looking for change? Do they like our symbol? Do they want to consider something else? Again, the closed helmet was our number-one candidate. And so again, they would come back with multiple closed helmets. We would take a look at those, go over the committee, and go through the process of trying to figure out them and refine in colors, what's that going to look like? And then we got to something along that way. So again, we talked about committee survey, we'd go lots of surveys back and forth, a lot of emails, and we just felt like, hey, we started with emails, it kind of gets a lot. And as you know, when people start responding to emails, reply also. We just put to a lot of surveys to get feedback and look at, you know, how do you feel about this being our new mascot? Were people at? Obviously, had a chance to comment, and so we go through and refine. And so this is... This was kind of the helmet that came, was our number-one choice. And so kind of from that, we said, what is our logo? What is our mascot? How is that going to look when we put it together? And so again, five different choices, but people liked it, what they didn't like, we refined and came through. And again, surveys. As we talk about surveys again, you know, none of this was, you know, none of this was everybody on board. There's a lot of different opinions in terms of, you know, what is it that we like, what we didn't like, we want to go through. Then we looked at the R. So again, we had them come up with six different choices. The committee chose two to bring to the students. When they looked at the R, you know, the number three was the top choice, which worked out because that's the R that I think we see the most of now currently. Doesn't mean there's not other Rs around, but at least that part matched up. I think that was pretty straightforward, and that was nice for us. They went to the students, and obviously, they felt the same way. So just to go back to the logos. So again, just to kind of bring people back to where the discussion is on the logo with that. Again, a lot of different opinions. Obviously, we had alumni represented on there in terms of where they are, in terms of, I think their opinion is, do we need to change at all? Do we like the one that we have? Can we stay with the one? And can we look at doing that? Some other concerns came out of this in terms of, is this really gender-neutral? Does this really represent who we are? Is it something when we say, this is our symbol and it's going to go everywhere? Is this really what we want? Again, so again, opinions of that are, I don't say all over the board, but we got a lot of different feedback, good, bad, and otherwise, in wanting to change. So what we want to come up with, and what I'm looking for tonight in terms of feedback and discussion, is, you know, kind of where we are, let you know where we are, and then get some direction on where we need to go with this. Some things that are pretty clear is the color, the cardinal. There's not a lot of dispute on that. We went with, we are a Nike branded school, but so we chose their Cardinal red. They came up with this. So again, if we go in this direction, we have the red, we can send that to our printers, we can send that to our uniform people, make sure we're on board. We have the R. I think we have pretty good consensus on, that's the R that we like. The committee, it certainly was the committee's choice, it was the choice of the students. Again, we see it already, and I don't think that's... I think the discussion is that we need to look at, really, what do we want to do with the Spartan head and logo? You know, where are we in terms of that discussion? Do we need to change? If we need to change, what is it that we're going to go with? And so this is what came out of the committee, but I would certainly say, this is not our final product or anything like that. So what we're going to hand out with, just to kind of... So when we're done, when we're done, what we're going to get back from the branding committee is these images, and these, we'll have access to these electronically, so these will be Rs to do with. These will be trademarked, these will be Rs that we can distribute wherever we want to. So again, our plan would be to go to the committee and say, Richfield Basketball, hey, do you want? This is your logo. You've got access to that. We can change anything within those banners for each of those organizations, and so everybody has access to that. When somebody wants to do t-shirts, here it is, here's what we can use. We can send that to the printers, so we make sure that we're there that way. So that's what we want. That's when we're done, we're going to be able to say, here's our stuff, here's the stuff for the coaches, here's our stuff for the community, here's our stuff for the advisors, here's the stuff when we do print materials. These are our official logos that we're going to be able to use. Other questions, concerns, things that might come up as we go? Again, you know, we're talking about the high school and the middle school primarily right now because they're already Spartan. One possible impact of this will be, is this something, can we use this to Spartanize our elementary schools? Right now, they each have their own individual mascots, so in this discussion, this is something we want to look at, kind of Spartanizing them earlier and cleaning that up. You always hear elementary kids ask for the Spartans. And our transition plan. We're going to continue to use the same stuff that we have. I know one of the concerns about rebranding is, what is the cost of changing everything over? We're truly trying to do this at minimal cost. Anything that we have that currently has a Spartan head on, we are not going to instantly get rid of, and we are not going to go cover up scoreboards. We don't have to order new suits. We are going to take the stuff that we have, and as we transition into new things in their natural life cycle, that's when we would purchase new and make sure that what we have on there matched up with us. For example, I know a couple of things, the uniforms. We have a four-year uniform cycle. We are not going to instantly get rid of anything that has a Spartan head on it. It's just in the next four years, when we purchase new uniforms, we'll make sure that it matches these standards. Our scoreboards for baseball, football, and the gym, soccer in the gym, all have Spartan head on there. We're not going to get new scoreboards until, at some point, obviously, we'll need to replace the scoreboards. At that point, we'll look and decide if we want to have the... Our symbol or logo is Spartan head, whatever we choose to go on. And so we don't look at big costs, we don't look at this stuff that we're going to do. The biggest impact, I think, is going to be when we look at the remodeling coming in the next two, four years. When we look at, we're going to remodel a high school, we put things back together, what are we going to use? What symbols are we going to use? We want to make a big impact and a big emphasis on branding our school and our community, and we have the opportunity to put these buildings back together to do that. And so we want to make sure that we've got these things decided, so we know what symbols, colors, things that we're going to use in that remodeling that way. So that's it. So I guess all I'm at is that I think we're pretty clear on the color, I think we're pretty good with the R. I think the last point of this will be really to go and look at the athletic advisory committee, how do we kind of get this out to a bigger community discussion on, what is this, what are we going to do with this Spartan head? Is there a need to change? And if we're going to change, what is that going to look like? What are the impacts of that? So questions, comments? That's right. What, I wonder where that were at Nike School? What does that mean? We signed, we, when we went with BSN, we signed a three-year deal, and part of that is, if we buy new uniforms, we're going to buy Nike. Part of that is, we get $10,000 with the free stock uniforms, in terms of that part of that, that way. So if we buy uniforms, if we buy warmups, they need to be Nike. So as part of that, which we're buying anyways, but we're getting a lot of the free stuff back from, so that was the Nike School. That was just part of our, I mean, that was part of our contract for equipment provided that way? Does that make sense?
So one of the things you talked about was community. So did, I think, some outreach to community and former Richfield, you know, Richfield graduates and things like that is important. Did we, have we done that, or is it just, it's that group on your committee, but the surveys essentially were just the students?
Yep. Yeah, the committee. So as you said, right now, our feedback is simply the alumni that we had on the committee and then reach out. So yes, I think that's a big piece of where to go is that way. I certainly think, I know where the alumni will go. I think, I think you have a pretty good sense of that, but that's going to be an important part of discussion.
Because I've heard from a few people, and I've heard both. I've heard, I've heard pretty much everything you could maybe possibly hear on the subject, but so there's a variety of thoughts out there. I think we have the extracurricular advisory committee that meets on the 8th. I think that would be a good group to discuss this with, since they're all involved in extracurricular, they're buying uniforms, things like that. Also, so you were kind of talking about, like, that's our logo, and you give that to our teams and things like that. I know for a lot of different sports teams, the students, like the captains of the teams and the students will choose, like apparel, that isn't necessarily formal uniform, but it's apparel that they pick out and order. Would that be required to have the same, like, across-the-board logo, or is there more leeway as far as that kind of thing?
I would like it to be uniform. I would like to say, if you're going to put an R, this is the R. If we're going to put Richfield Swimming, you know, it's going to look like this. I think that's part of the piece of creating an identity and kind of going through and saying, here's who we are. So when we're anywhere in the Twin Cities, they see the R, they know, oh, that's the Richfield R, and you see Richfield. I think that helps. I don't know if I would say, you can't sort of say, if somebody's buying something that's their own, and it's their own money, you know, that would be...
But they would have access to that.
Oh, yes, that's what I mean, is we...
You don't have to be a culture.
So when they decide, choose shirts, yes, here it is, we would really like you to do X, Y, and Z. I understand, I think the school would buy, would fit within that, but I think, and I think the coaches are on board. I don't think, I mean, kind of talk to any advisors that way. They like that. I mean, they're looking for some direction on what to give. The problem is, when they buy t-shirts, they, people will send back all sorts of Spartans, and, oh, we've got this one on file, and that's what they end up with. So this is something we can send it out and say, oh, we would like this.
One thing I'm noticing, as I am sitting here browsing through Spartan logos on the internet at the moment, is it seems like there are also situations, and again, I am not expert in the field of logos, right? But it seems like there are places where they have a helmet-based logo and also a mascot that is separate. So if I go to, for example, Michigan State, Michigan State has a Spartan helmet as their logo, and then they have Sparty the Spartan. And so it seems like there's also situations where there's both a logo, but then there are also logo mascot that are separate, or Sparty wears the Spartan helmet. And so something, obviously, for conversation in the need of the extracurricular advisory.
And I think Spartans are particularly challenging because they, I looked around a little bit at a couple other schools, and the ones I looked at all had at least two that popped up when you just Google them. I think Amber Grove Heights, and I can't remember the name of the other school that I found, like, around here. We maybe also want to make sure we don't get too close to what another district...
Well, that's part of this, this will be trademarked. This will be our Spartan logo, so it'll be unique. That's part of going through them. It's not simply going to the, you know, going to the internet and say, hey, we like that one, let's make that one. This will truly be, this will be our logo, it'll be unique to us that we created. I think there's, I think there's a way to, again, to continue to honor the legacy and tradition and the alumni's perspective on changing and why we need to change what we have and continue to do that. And also have an opportunity to look for who are we, what best represents us, and take into account a lot of different voices, so I hope we can do that.
So that kind of touches on a question that I had, because I certainly respect the desire to maintain some continuity with, for what is of our traditional. I mean, not that there is one traditional R, although it seems like maybe there is one that has been downed, but, I mean, obviously, we have, like on the vision cards even, we've got, we sort of established with our letterhead with this particular Spartan and lettering and so forth. So anyway, I guess that was part of my question, was I totally get the benefit of uniformity. And I guess I was going to wonder, is there room for, is there room for someplace, you know, some venues where the history is appropriate, and some venues where the kind of modern uniformity is? And I guess I don't know the answer to that. It'd be interesting to maybe get some feedback.
Hey, I think so. I do, I think there's a place and a way to do that. I think that's one of the things that we talked about, so, you know, like, all right, if we're going to change that, maybe we should change everything else. I guess that was never my personal intent of doing this, but looking at, you know, this is an option. An option we go through and decide for the next 20 years, you know, what are we going to do? What are we going to represent?
Hey, but aside your committee, you've got Booster Club President and Vice President. Is Booster Club for all sports, or is it just football? What is the Booster Club?
Lisa Thompson and Sheila, it's Sheila, Lisa Thompson.
So they're the quarterback club?
They were quarterback.
It's quarterback club?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have Lisa Henry-Meister on, and she represents swimming.
No, I'm not asking that. I just didn't know what the Booster Club is.
And she probably should say football.
That's the Booster Club.
I mean, doesn't basketball Booster Club?
So just so I can hear it out loud. So my understanding is, we're talking about three different things. We're talking about a standardized R, which seems like there is relatively solid consensus that Cardinal Red, and there is the paper super details in the presentation. Looking at a standardized R, it seems like there is consensus on an R, and so we could have that same R for all of those pieces. And it sounds to me like there's some additional information to gather in terms of where to go from a logo mascot perspective. Is that what I hear here? And that's what I heard from Davis' intention.
I'll see Mike the last time. Does he have anything additional to that? One piece that I would love to get feedback from the professionals on is the lettering style with the R, and the lettering style that was at least presented with that first go by, if you want to go around on the logo, was different. And so that, again, would be good to see, uniformity there. So when we, I mean, given that that R lettering style is one that is well-accepted in the community, maybe we could also have that same lettering style reproduced in the...
I don't know, if I remember correctly, the committee didn't like is we kind of did the Richfield with all of that lettering.
Yep.
That was not the touch, because they liked the R by itself, but in terms of when they put that out there, that was not the touch.
Interesting.
So I mean, I think a piece to bring back in terms of that conversation on, we would be introducing some element of non-uniformity with that piece.
Well, that, it's kind of, I would like to see more, some of that brought to a larger group, like you're saying.
Sure.
As opposed to a very small, small group, so.
Perfect.
But yeah, otherwise.
All right, so let's have a conversation about vision cards and reporting our progress.
Real quick, before we start, I'll share that Paula Cole had a personal emergency, and she won't be able to make it tonight, so it was unexpected. So we hopefully will have Tim soon, so we will have a conference.
Sounds good. All right, so vision cards and reporting our progress. And so let's talk a little bit about what vision cards are. You know, as we've talked about it in my goals for this past year, we did a great deal of development in regard to vision cards. And what vision cards are, they're a way of reporting our progress on our strategic plan, strategies, goals, actions, and activities. They can also serve as a public accountability system and a way to remain focused on our top priorities. As you recall, as a board, we wanted to talk about how do we report the things that we're doing, and how do we really look at reporting things well beyond test scores, graduation rate, and how do we really try to take a broad-based perspective on the things that we have? And so what we did as a leadership team, the entire management team and members across the organization, is we worked with our strategic plan to create vision cards for each of our strategies. And so just as a reminder for our strategic plan, we have four strategies in there. We'll provide challenging, relevant, and engaging educational opportunities for all students that will increase learning. Number two, we will positively promote Richfield Public Schools. Number three, we will provide a welcoming, healthy, supportive, safe, and caring environment. And number four, we will acquire and align human, financial, operational, and technology resources to maximize our organizational goals. What vision cards are is that, is then they are presented on a schedule. And so what we're going to do as part of this year, as we begin now reporting from the database that we've worked on, we're going to create a calendar of the cards to be developed and then to be presented. Tonight, we're going to actually present, we'll positively promote Richfield Public Schools. The second one that we will be working on, and will be presented in early fall, will be Strategy Four, we will acquire and align human, financial, operational, and technology resources to maximize organizational goals. And then, as data becomes available, we'll continue to follow with our other vision cards. The other thing to keep in mind is, are those cards, and is this database final? And no, because this is our first time through, what we're going to do is, as we present them, we'll obviously review the cards and try to determine what our most important data points are. We'll continue to review our organizational goals, we'll continue to determine what our top priorities. And we'll really learn more about the areas that we, as an organization, you as a board, and our community want us to measure and be able to report back to the community. So here's our first swing at vision cards. And so this is Vision Card B, which is Strategy B in our strategic plan, positively promote Richfield Public Schools. Within our vision cards, and the slide to follow actually shows a spreadsheet that shows each of these in a little bit more detail. So we're going to leave that up on the large screen with Mr. Boy, and we're going to kind of go through the visual and the spreadsheet at the same time. So within that strategy, there are really six areas we tried to pick as our top measuring point, ranked in five different areas, from one to five. Level one, we decided is intervention, is something we need to specifically attend to. High concern, level two, baseline, or sort of mid-pack is that level three. Progressing is level four in vision. Where we really want to be, to be a high-performing organization, is our level five. So each of these focus on some of the things related to our strategic plan and our actions and activities to positively promote Richfield Public Schools, trying to enhance engagement, recruitment, retention of students, families, and staff. So you'll see on your visual, total number of new pre-K-12 student applications to the district. So this is a new measurement. We've been trying to figure out how to capture market rate appropriately and looking at what that would be. And one of the things we really wanted to focus on, because we're really talking about promotion in this particular piece, is how do we promote in a way that attracts? And so one of the data points that we have not kept in the past, but we will begin keeping and really pay attention to, is what are those total number of new applications of new people to our district on a yearly basis? And so once we gather that decent data, and this is one of the things that we'll find out as we go along, there are areas where we don't necessarily gather data and have it in the past, we kind of felt as a management team that we shouldn't. So this is going to be something that we will begin tracking and continue to track to see how we're doing from an overall attraction perspective. Similarly, one of the things that we do look at is overall retention of our students. So when we do have students, how do we retain our students? What level do we contain? If you'll note it, or what level do we retain? The second on our spreadsheet, we decided that under 93% would be intervention, at or above 99% would be our vision. And right now, we're performing at 97% retention, and so we rank that as a 3.9 or at the higher end of our baseline, not quite to that closer to vision progressing level, because we still want to get a little bit higher on that. But that is where we ended up from that perspective. We do an annual survey each year to look at our parents and look at parent engagement. And so parents reporting that they would recommend Richfield Public Schools to other families. We decided the range should be between 65% of the low-end intervention and 80% or above high-level four vision. Current performance is at 67%, so that's an area that we really wanted to focus on. We rank that at 2.7, right in between in that sort of high-concern area. We rank that at 2.7 or right in between in that sort of high-concern area, and clearly something that we've talked about as a board, as we think about communication, marketing, and customer service. Similarly, on that same survey, looking at stakeholders, reporting that Richfield Public Schools is promoted in a positive manner, something we obviously has had significant conversation about as a board, looking at our needs to communicate and market differently, to support communications, and as we look to add communications to our organization, it's no surprise that this is an area that we are already actually creating an intervention in this area by adding communications to our organization. Looking at 70% or above, and right now that is 67.8 or area of high need and also probably why we have decided that that's an area of focus to really intervene this 18, 19 school year. Then we also wanted to look at participation rate in extracurricular activities, comparing our current data to our past data and what surrounding districts are, seeing that if we were in the low 30s, we would want to be intervening. We're looking at wanting to be at or above 50%, and right now, we're right in that mid-pack baseline range at 42%, or somewhere that we're considering baseline, something that we want to continue to improve, but not an area of high concern. And then that next one having to do with community education, something that actually has significantly increased already, is we've taken over our own community education organization. Looking at 2,800 or below, and this is again, looking at our current data and then also looking at those last couple of years, would be an intervention level, 3,400 participants or above would be an area to celebrate in vision, and right now, we're looking at 3098 from 2017, 2018, putting us right in the middle of that baseline area, something that we feel okay about and something we want to continue to work at. So what we're trying to do with our vision cards, and each of our, each of our strategies will have a set of areas, a set of measures that we look at, some will have larger amounts of areas because we have more activities within that strategy, and some will have fewer. And so we wanted to try tonight to present one of our vision cards, show the board what it looks like, show the community what it looks like, and continue to refine our, our analysis of our performance, and we will look at that wide range of things we're trying to accomplish within our strategic plan. So with that, Mr. Boyd, can we scroll back to the visual and we'll just leave that up on the board and ask the board for any questions?
So I like the overall design in that I think it gives enough information but not overload in terms of this kind of level. I have some, I have some kind of in the weeds questions, a couple. With our measure of total number of new pre-K to 12 students, so we've got that, okay, so we've got that as a percentage, I'm thinking about this. So we're calculating that by taking the, the new students for a given year, and we're saying, what is that as a percentage of the whole enrollment for that year? Something that we would do on October 1?
So we're looking at the total number of new applications to the district overall. And then we would compare that number to next year's number as we look to attract. And so this would be a measurement of attraction. And so we'd be looking at where we are as a baseline, how many people apply to our district, and then trying to increase that number as we look for a promotion and traction perspective in one of the areas of measurement.
So what I want to, by getting that from a, just a bit from a calculation perspective, what's the, as a percentage, what is the denominator in that percentage calculation? Is the denominator total student population for, so in other words, I guess, so what I was assuming is that we were taking new students for.
I'm going to use the white word.
A given year. And then dividing that by total students for that year, but maybe you're telling me, I mean, I can see that you would look at that, how it trended over time.
Right. So at present, what might be confusing at the moment is the percentages in the spreadsheet.
Yes.
So while we have numbers in the other areas, we may look at that. Imagine that we have 1,000 new applicants to our district this year.
Yep, yep.
That would go in the baseline level. And then as we look at a 0 to 5% increase, 1,050 for next year would put us at level four progressing, and 1,100 or more would put us at vision. And so kind of increasing that number.
Okay, got it. I see, I am understanding now.
And then each year, does the year before become the new zero?
It would be, yes.
Okay.
So here, so here's my question.
Yes.
So how with that, with that method of coming up with a calculation, how do we sort out what you might call sort of natural population growth as opposed to families actively choosing? I mean, obviously, every family is actively choosing, but what I mean from a market share perspective, we've always thought of it as we have a certain number of resident families here in the district, a certain percentage of them are choosing to enroll their children not in Richfield Public Schools. We want to see that number go down. So there's, there's some possibility that if we have, let's say we have a little, a little mini baby boom in a given year, and that pushes up a high level of new kindergarten enrollment, then those kids hit five, that could artificially inflate our measure, I guess that's what I'm.
So that's something we should look at the measurement methodology and reexamine that in terms of that. It doesn't, you're right, it doesn't currently as devised, take into account growth of Richfield population as a city or shrinking of Richfield population as a city.
Right. Or you can figure out.
And again, or the, or the birth rate, the.
Right.
That includes the birth rate.
Okay. What was the basis for which intervention values were determined? How did you decide that 93% at level one is not sufficient versus 92%?
We, we tried to do the best we could based on current data and based on trend data of what does it look like in the past? And so we felt that, for example, if retention of students dropped to 93%, which would be lower than historical, that would be very concerning. We've had some grades that have ebbed and flowed, but as an entire organization, we tried to figure out based on past history, what would be really that concerning type of number for us on the bottom, and then what would be high achievement based on what has been seen in the past, or things that would really exceed what our current expectation is.
Past history is biggie term.
Absolutely.
So I'll go on the weeds on this one again.
Yep.
Because I know everyone is just really loving all of this math conversation. So again, I just am curious about how we're, how we're choosing numerator and denominator for calculating this guy. So if we have on an October 1 count for 2019.
Which guy are we talking about?
The retention.
Got it, retention.
And then we have an October 1 count the following year.
So here's the answer for it.
Do you? Because here's my question. My question is, are we basically, so are we only tracking, are we tracking this on a student at the individual student level? So if, if we have, it's possible that we could have 100 kids enrolled in grade four in 2018, 19, and 100 kids enrolled in grade five in 19, 20, but there aren't the same 100 kids. So in other words, that our retention is not 100%, even though the number is the same.
All right, so I might have to rely on Mr. Holgi slightly on this one. I do know that there's a state calculation methodology for student retention.
Okay.
I don't believe it is exact same student to same student.
Yeah.
It is within grade and returning numbers that next year.
Got it. And so your retention. Which is what we looked at in the past, making the assumption that, that we're not having huge churn rate. That's, that's potential.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Because we would still want to know if people are, I mean, the point is finding out if people are opting out, right?
Correct.
So we would still, even if we didn't measure that in this, in this little box in this situation, that's still a number we would want to know.
Right. All right, so you'd like us to look at adding a measure for same students or exact student count retention, we'll say, like student to student. Peter Tensing is in our.
Well, right, that would be, that would be interesting. I mean, I know, I know how one would do that. Of course, Paula's husband, he can do this as a database administrator, but anyway, no, I know I can do that.
We can measure that, and we, we do have the ability to measure that. So we can look at, so again, taking you back a couple slides, these aren't finalized, these are things that we present, share, look at. We are already presenting a wider range of data that we've seen in the past, and then if there are areas that would be of significant interest to gather additional pieces. Obviously, as you can see, when you create a cube visual, it's much more easy to add the conversation than the spreadsheets are. So same, so what I'm hearing is looking at applications and figuring out some way to look at that as a connection of birth rate and population, and then also adding something in regard to same student to same student retention, to see how we keep our students.
Right, the rest of it, both from that perspective. And I really do, I really do appreciate from having a communication tool, I think, that's, that's a good job.
Yeah, I'm excited to see the rest as they roll out.
Yes, and so as, as become my habit, we are going from the easier to the more complex. And so the reason we have the financial component is there is some pretty easy data in regard to those strategies that we are able to roll out, and then things become more complex as we move forward. But we will create a calendar, and as we really learn in this next year, as we present this, when our data really rolls in, that's when we'll become our regular presentation of these. And so these will be ongoing presentations of each card on a yearly basis, if not, a little bit more than that will depend, as we learn, when does our data become available as we do this strategic plan work and as we do our vision card presentations.
I like the color thing, too. That's like, makes it just so easy to just look and get a picture. Nicely done.
Now, I realize this vision card is for promotion and retention. Can we somehow work in market share as part of this?
So we were looking at that, and I had a conversation with Mr. Paulus about that. We can certainly look at market share. It is a very complex figure. As I've, as I've been working on my dissertation, I've learned more and more about market share. Complexities in market share are pretty overwhelming. We have looked at putting it into vision card C as a possible, which is welcoming, healthy, supportive, safe, and caring environment. We've also looked at it as putting it into this vision card. Here's the, the catches, and this is something the board would have to think about, are that it, of all the measures that we look at, market share may or may not be an accurate measure of performance from us as a district. A couple of complexities are, as I'm working on my dissertation, there are currently 55 districts that are more diverse than the state average. Of those 55 districts, 10,000 students or over 10,000 students are lost by those districts on an aggregate. So when you take open enrollment in and open enrollment out, there's an overall loss of 10,000 students within that group. Of those, 8,500 students are white students. And so there's a significant transition of white students and a large number of students out of diverse districts, or districts that are more diverse than the state average, to other districts within the state. And so all of those, not, not every district is a large open enrollment loser in that category, but the large group is a wide range of open enrollment loser from a numerical perspective. Similarly, districts who are higher in poverty and districts who are more diverse than the districts around them or the surrounding schools are also significant losers in open enrollment. Districts with charters that also happen to be less diverse than the district itself happen to be challenged by open enrollment also. And so there's some pretty significant open enrollment factors that are well outside of the control of Richfield Public Schools that make that a very complex number. That said, if we do want to examine that and have that conversation, we can certainly look at that as a data point to talk about.
Yeah. And given our conversations, John, about the other two kind of student population statistics, do you feel that those would give you a lens on kind of that market share concept?
I guess I don't. The one reason is we've got the pre-K feeding into us. And I guess my concern is how many of those kids do we keep over the years?
Right, and the retention.
Well, the retention would help with that.
Yeah, although for right now, it's sort of a one-year thing.
Yeah. So we will look at how we would add something from a market share perspective?
Yeah.
And see what that might look like. With that, any other questions about, or things to look at or to add from this one?
So I think since Mr. Paulus has not returned, or has not arrived yet, I think we'll just take a short recess until we have a quorum. All right, let this meeting back to order. We have covered information and proposals and non-action items, and we will now actually move to review and approval of the agenda.
I will move the agenda as presented, noting that we have diverted slightly from the order.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda passes. So we will then move to consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Or is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I will move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion?
I am, I am just looking at, I'm just looking at item 48, 488.1. It looks like the expectation, this is signatories on RBCU accounts, and the expectation is that these would be updated annually, is that correct, Craig?
Yeah, the authorization, so the signatories or depository accounts is updated annually because of the changes with RBCU this year where we have people that had to be removed from the thing.
Yeah.
We have to do a separate resolution this time for RBCU specifically. So if there are changes, either drops or after that, that has to be done annually. Other than that, we review the depository accounts on a annual basis.
Okay, excellent. Because obviously, you know, we, like you said, we got into a situation where we had some pretty outdated.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were going to be.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Ashmead and a second by Mr. Paulus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda has passed. So we will move on to board policy 586, gender inclusion policy.
Right, so we are looking at gender inclusion policy, and we will call this the second read, but it is kind of the first second read. As we reviewed last board meeting, gender inclusion from a larger legal perspective. We also looked at what a couple of other districts have presented. And we have now created, based on the model policy ideas, policy 586, draft one, gender inclusion policy, includes most like all of our policies, a purpose to ensure that we have a safe, supportive environment for everyone. Policy statement, which includes definition of gender components, including assigned gender, gender expression, identity, identity disorder, nonconformity, and transgender, clarifying about the prohibition of bullying, harassment, and discrimination, clarifying about gender transition in school, names and pronoun usage, dress code, gender segregated activities, rules, policies, and practices, PE classes, intramural, inter-scholastic athletics, restrooms, locker rooms, and changing areas, and then also privacy. And obviously, as we always do, we have our legal references and then our cross-references within our policies. And so the goal tonight is to review this, knowing that we will come back to this in August twice, and ideally trying to pass this prior to the school year beginning. So with that, you've all had a chance to read the policy, which looks very similar to what ours did last time, but also integrated some of the best practice components that other districts have in their gender inclusion policy. We were able to bring this forward to you tonight for a first read, or a first, second read, as the case may be.
I have a few comments. I'm trying to open everything here. I noted a few things in section four, where we talk about transition and say that the administration staff will work with students and families. Is that provided that they request it? I mean, we, it's not up to administration and staff to determine if students and families need work along these lines, correct?
Correct. Okay, so we will look at that and the language there.
Okay, you're right. Yeah, I just wanted to understand what would happen to the student within this policy who was, you know, had not approached staff or administration or the families, not, how do we propose living up to that, that wording? Also, you know, just want to be clear that item six on dress code, you know, if, the moment we pass this requires a concurrent, immediate review of the, whatever dress code we have to purge of pronouns or to align it with as neutral pronouns as possible.
Yes, so the Safe and Secure Schools group is. Yes, so the Safe and Secure Schools Group is working on policies. I believe they have already started looking at the attendance policy, the truancy policy, and they will be reviewing, I'm not sure if it is first on their agenda, but reviewing the dress code and things, and actually all of the behavior procedures for all of our buildings are being reviewed by the Safe and Secure Schools Group throughout the course of this year.
And interscholastic sports, when we reference that, you know, we have a requirement to adhere or comply with whatever, like the State High School League tells. And I know, you know, they may have a policy that agrees with ours, or they may have a policy that is in conflict with ours. And we don't get to decide, you know, well, depending on how we vote later on State High School League, but we, you have no option on that. You either participate in the State High School League and they're rules, or you don't participate in interscholastic athletics. So just want some nuance around that.
We will review the Minnesota State High School League in that area.
And lastly, when we talk about privacy, you know, the extent to which, you know, do, does the privacy extent, like, so if we have, do we maintain privacy of a student who is a minor even to parents, or are there circumstances in which we would protect the student's right to privacy? Or does it, you know, I imagine there exists a right to privacy even for a minor if we have a concern about health or safety. I imagine that, you know, it takes something extreme like that. I mean, there are parental rights, of course, but we have obligations for safety for students as well. So I just, if there's anything we could look into along those lines.
We will review that in regard to FERCPA and Minnesota Government Data Practices Act and also privacy regulations.
So on part, on section three, the part about education and training regarding the issues addressed, we provide for employees to the practical community. I guess I want to be sure we have something set up and in place for that. I know we have often we write like a procedure or a process that goes along with these policies. So I want to be sure that we were working on something like that. So we have this in place for the inactive policy so that things kind of don't, nothing gets dropped. And then the section about gender transition at school, so we talk about tailoring the gender transition into individual students, and that's, it's a very personal, specific thing, so I think that makes a lot of sense. But also having a process ready to go for that, a plan and maybe like a checklist system so that we make sure that we are, you know, checking off every step and meeting the needs of those kids. And I know there's the MDH toolkit that we can use maybe as a guideline, but just to make sure that we have that on our radar.
We will look at that.
I had a question, and I just wanted to clarify a point that Tim was making, and that was specific to the gender transition section as well. So Tim, if I was hearing correctly, you were talking about how we identify students who are transitioning.
Right.
Correct. Was I understanding you correctly to say that the burden of identification would fall upon the student, or was I understanding that there might be a shared burden or?
It's not clear to me, right? So is, it's, what we say is, school administration and staff shall work with any such students and their parents regarding as to identify which steps create necessary conditions to make the transition experience as positive as possible. So it suggests that the administration and the staff are going to reach out and bring up the topic, perhaps without the student or family bringing it up.
Yeah.
And that's possible. I mean, I just want clarity on that. Is that the intent, that we want staff to, you know, we have outreach workers, we have others within a building who could be supportive and make, you know, I just want to know, is it advocacy that we're going to call home or, you know, pull a student aside and say, hey, would you like this help? And, you know, run the risk of the student saying, I don't know what you're talking about, you know, this, I don't want to talk to you, you know, like, so what level of introduction of the topic is of the burden, not burden, but the idea that the idea would come from the school side first, without it being requested or sought out?
Yeah. So it's, I mean, it feels like it's a, it's one of those scenarios where there is potential for the transitioning student to come to the attention of school staff without necessarily actively seeking it out, but through some less active mechanism. I think basically what you're saying is that we need to, when we're thinking about how we implement this part of the policy, we are also comparatively thinking about the privacy aspect of the policy.
Correct, correct, correct. The student, you know, as written, I interpreted as that the administration or staff could pull a student aside for a conversation that the student finds unwelcome or unnecessary, or that the family finds unwelcome or unnecessary. Right? Because it would be reaching out, as written, that the staff shall provide, you know, shall work with the students. How do you work, you know, how do you work with someone without telling them, without informing them of how you're working with them? Or maybe it's possible, you know?
So I'm hearing we go back and clarify how we determine partnership with families and what goes into that.
Yeah, partnership with students, with students and families, yeah.
And making sure that they're aware that the policy even exists, right? Because...
What was coming to my mind is that we could amend the second sentence, basically, school administration and staff shall work with any such students and their parents regarding, comma, based upon the student's individual needs, comma, to identify which steps will create the necessary condition. So making it clear that the, that the...
Right, yeah.
That this is, I mean, sort of being very particular about it, being a student center.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's, I mean, whether that's the final wording or not, that's a reasonable start, but the...
We will look into that. Other language suggestions or questions?
If we initiate, will our students come to us? Are we like, I mean, if we start saying this kid is strange or different or something?
Well, we would never use such terms.
No, we wouldn't use such terms.
But, but, right, the way it is written, we run the risk of, you know, my concern was that we run the risk of staff or someone on staff introducing a topic to the student that may be unwelcome. And they, they may interpret it as, why do you think I need this help?
Yeah.
And it could create an unwelcome environment for that student now. Right, whether, you know, they could feel as though that they're handling it privately and don't need that assistance, or they could wonder why you're asking them in the first place.
Yeah.
You know, anything from zero to 179 degrees, right?
Yeah.
So I just, yeah, some sort of, some sort of, as Peter suggested, something that is, you know, assessing the needs of the student, what, you know, what makes the environment most supportive of them.
Okay, so you have some work to do on that one?
Sounds good. We will work with that feedback and try to re-craft our language for read number two.
So we will move on to new business and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights Agreement.
All right, so we are looking at joining in partnership with the Department of Human Rights and up to 43 other public school districts, all working collaboratively in regard to disparities in school discipline related to students of color and students with disabilities. Department of Human Rights is working across the state to try to reduce exclusion from school in terms of discipline and suspensions for our students. Currently, 19 districts have worked through agreements with the Department of Human Rights and are trying to partner in a way to do this work in a creative and innovative way. For us, we've been working with the Department of Human Rights to craft an agreement, looking at the things that we're doing, and so I'm presenting to you some work that we'll be doing over the next three years. Most of the things we have already been creatively and equity-based engaging in, trying to engage our students in deep relationships, trying to create positive learning environments and positive community-based environments for all of our students. I've been really looking at a plan to, much like we're doing in our Safe and Supportive Schools Committee, continue to improve the culture and climate of our schools, reduce discipline incidents, and make sure that all of our students are as successful as possible in school. So with that, I will leave it to you for questions about our agreement and our plan to work collaboratively over the next three years with other districts and the Department of Human Rights.
I don't have many comments. I was going to say that as I read through it, there were so many things that we'd already introduced as part of our plan to, where we're already underway. And so, you know, it's, while not exactly the kind of publicity any district wants, I noticed the list of those who've already come to agreement are pretty much any district with sizable populations of diversity. And so we're caught in the same net as everyone else. I'm not saying that we don't, you know, there's not something we could do better, but it seems to be a common occurrence. As you've said, 43 districts is probably, you know, we could probably guess 25 of them just by going around the seventh county metro and choosing the districts with diversity.
And then basically it's reporting to them, you know, the things that we're already doing and the results.
We're talking about that ongoing work and continuing our focus. As we think about what we've talked about over the last year, you know, we are already implementing some additional increases in our social emotional learning for our students, we're implementing interventions across our district and really focusing on the area, sort of that next step of our strategic plan to continue to improve the culture and climate of our schools. And yes, you're correct, we're doing a lot of the things that are successful strategies and successful practices, and as we continue to get better at those, we're excited to share and partner with the other districts as we do this work together.
I don't know exactly where, you know, if we have the discipline piece, you know, specifically called out within our teaching plan, although it seems it might be appropriate for a vision card.
So as you think about vision card three, which would be later, or the C, that's actually about creating a culture and climate where all belong, and there are a wide range of social emotional pieces, there is discipline data within that vision card. There are things about engagement in positive ways and things of that nature within that card, and those are things we'll be reporting back to the board and then also sharing with our common districts.
I will move that we approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agreement is approved. So we will move on to the 2018-19 membership in Minnesota State High School League.
All right, so on a yearly basis, we approve our membership in the high school league. This is just required as part of being a member. Just as a reminder, this does not change our league for next year or our conference for next year, that's something in 1920. This is just remaining part of the larger organization of the State High School League. And so this is a resolution, and this is something done in the summer on a yearly basis.
And as I've asked every year, and the answer is always the same, if you don't do this, you really won't have any interscholastic athletics, right? You won't find anyone to partner or play with.
We would end up in the intramural high school, we would have no competitive sports.
Which would be wildly unpopular in some circles, so I will move, is it resolution, I'll move the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? This is a resolution, so I will poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the resolution passes. We will now move on to the bus lease purchase resolutions, and Mr. Holtie.
Thank you. Earlier this spring, the board authorized the lease purchase of 165 passenger bus and two 77 passenger buses. Based on that authorization, we went on stop financing for those. This resolution is requesting your authorization to execute all of those documents that are associated with that lease purchase. The second page in here gives the analysis. We had two responders for our financing this year, American Capital, which we've used in some of our financing in the past, as well as Kansas State. You can see that American Capital came in lower total financing cost over the seven years is $47,0656. With Kansas State, the total financing cost is $56,000. That's the financing component of it, and then you can see what those annual payments are. In the past, we've talked about if financing continues to be the best option. As we move forward, we continue to evaluate that on a regular basis, you know, what's the available funds in a given year. We think next year will be a better time to start to move to a purchase option or look at that a little bit deeper, because at this point, we're anticipating that we won't be doing three full-size buses at that point. But this year, just with financing and kind of where allocations are and where things are in that path of continuum, we're seeing that financing this time as well.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, I mean, these rates do look a little higher than what we traditionally see, so we didn't, we know that interest rates were there, they look like a...
Yeah, it's about a percent over what it was a couple of years ago. Last year, we had a real low response of 1.62 percent, which was lower than anybody else was allocating previous to that with running about 2.5, 2.3, 2.7 with a couple over in the 3 percent range. So we'll continue to evaluate that as we move forward.
So I guess with that, if these are the financing institutions that are presenting, you know, those rates, is that, is that something that would match, you know, are these the only potential lenders or?
What we do on a annual basis is we have a group that requests areas, and we've kind of sought that out. We did have one Wells Fargo also responded, but they weren't able to meet the qualifications for bid specifically as far as the seven years and arrears, which is another piece that we're continuing to look at right now. Because we have things on the cycle for financing, it's our recommendation to stay on this path for at least one more year. And then knowing that that market's going to change and kind of some of the reserves that we have kind of been looking at, how do we put aside some money for capital purchases like this? So we're paying as you go, or paying in one time and investing for the future versus kind of pay as you go, where you're paying for that time period that you're using it. And then earlier this spring, we presented all the information about what the history was for these vessels and why these were being recommended for replacement at this point, where these were replaced.
With that information, I will move the recommendation, I guess it's a, it's a resolution.
It is a resolution.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? This is a resolution, so I will poll the board. Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution passes. So we will move on to another resolution, the vehicle lease purchase resolution.
And this one's a little bit different. The first resolution is a tax-exempt financing piece. This does not have that same tax-exempt status, so this financing group doesn't require the same authorization, it's not a seven-year and things like that. The board did previously authorize these purchases as well. This is brought back because the year of these vehicles is no longer available. We had a 2017 that we were pursuing. Those are no longer available on the state bid. And so, because it was no longer, or 2018, but 2018 is no longer available on the state bid. So we did go out and seek RFPs for that and bids associated with that. Based on that information, we're recommending somebody other than who previously had that state bid contract, so that's why we're bringing this one back to you tonight. This is lease financing through Brembilla's of Eden Prairie. You can see the financing terms, it's a couple hundred dollar savings when you factor in the cost of the vehicle, and then the financing terms of it exact matches to what we want. Brembilla's has an extended warranty that our facilities department would like to pursue as part of that piece, and so that's an added $2,570 on that replacement. I believe that is a seven-year extended warranties associated with that. So based on the terms and the staffing, they have requested that for these two trucks specifically.
Yeah, I'm willing to move, I was starting to think about, but maybe this is something for a later, this will be something for later conversations, so I'm intrigued by what you were sort of alluding to about our ability to move forward to be able to sort of finance this proactively. I'm intrigued to learn about that, but that would be for a different day. So I will move, I will move the resolution of the truck lease purchase.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? This again is a resolution, so I will poll the board. Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution passes. So we will, thank you, Mr. Holtie. We will move on to donations. We will, thank you, Mr. Holte. We move on to donations.
All right, there we go. So, Richfield STEM School received $339.99 in donations from the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign from these donors. Dennis Cox, $180. Patrick Stone, $119.99, and Emily Barris, $40. Additionally, the Spartan Foundation donated $6,700 to the district to be used as follows. Microphones for the Theater Department, $4,500. Student leadership, $1,000. And equipment for the Athletic Department, $1,200. So we're very thankful for our supportive community and our kind donors.
Yeah, I would just say the board liaison to the Spartan Foundation, just to highlight that, you know, they get a lot of publicity for, you know, scholarships, you know, connected to the Athena Award and the Spooner Award, and I think it was as many as 25 seniors this year received some scholarship across a range of, you know, education options in the future, whether it was four-year school, two-year school, technical and trade, first, you know, awards for kids, first generation in their family for, you know, for college education, kids who've overcome some significant obstacles and things like that. This is, you know, they seem to be, sometimes they're painted as too narrowly as having sort of an athletics focus when they really actually have a focus on all the activities that we offer in the district, as well as so many of the kids when you factor in how those awards are given out. So the Theater Department is a nice one to highlight, as well, you know, as well as the leadership program that's within there. You know, so it's, it's not just the athletics department that they support.
So would anyone like to move that we accept these donations with gratitude?
I'll move that we accept the donations with gratitude.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted. And we will move on to advanced planning and the legislative update. Mr. Yonoski?
All right, so we're in the midst of the summer, so there's not a large legislative update. However, AMSD, as a member of the Legislative and Executive Committee, some, we've begun a conversation around AMSD platform for next year. So it's a good time for us to begin thinking about our Richfield Public Schools platform for next year. And one of the things that will be on our top legislative agenda, just as a reminder, will be a budget year, which means that the legislature will come into session in early January. And so it's one of the longer sessions, and so we can also reflect on whether or not we want to continue our February meeting with our legislators, or we want to do that in late fall, and do that prior to the legislative session, or as we have historically done, kind of both. This year, in the shortened session, we met before the session, and sometimes we meet early in the session. So it's important for us to begin thinking about that. Areas for us to focus on, obviously, that continued work around special education cross-subsidy, or the underfunded component of special education. And last year, all groups that I can come up with in regard to education in Minnesota, Minnesota Association of School Administrators, Minnesota School Boards Association, all, and a wide range of others, all rallying around special education cross-subsidy. And so it's probably something that we will continue that conversation around. And then as we reflect, we'll also look at some of those other areas that we will want to have a conversation about to put on our top priorities as a board.
I would definitely again ask our administrative leadership to let us know about unfunded, that seems to be an area where even in divided government, you have a chance to do something. And then also policy, you know, their policy provision that they're sort of, I think the funding piece is, funding piece is kind of given sometimes, so I feel that, you know, we could be looking at places where there's policy opportunities as well. Just to make sure that I, I'm recalling correctly, my recollection is that the Summit of Radio System did not make this.
That was in the bill that was vetoed by the governor. And so many of the provisions that were out there, there were conversations, things that we were pleased with and things that we were also concerned about, all ended up vetoed in the governor's overall budget. We did have one of our top priorities moved through as we were talking about solidifying the state pension fund without it directly impacting the classrooms, and that actually went through the Ways and Means Committee in the taxes side of things. And so it wasn't directly coming out of the education component, and so it will not directly impact the classrooms. They've taken specific bipartisan steps to solidify the future of the retirement funds and pension funds.
I would have, I would definitely advocate for proactive and earlier meeting with our legislative delegation. There's a good chance that we'll have some new faces in that group.
Well, it's a certainty.
Yes, there is, at least one, right, yeah. So I would advocate for that.
And reflecting that question back, obviously, if there was an election in November, are you suggesting before they are seated in January, or?
Just thinking early January.
Early January, okay. We will look to do that.
So information and questions from the board?
One quick update for the board. I was nominated to be on the Executive Committee of Metro ECSU, one of the other organizations that we are a part of that does work across the metro area. And so I have one more year in the Executive Committee of AMSD, but I anticipate being brought forward for the Executive Committee of Metro ECSU, another consortium we're a part of, and joining their executive board this time as well.
I would just mention the, the urban, what is it, Urban Wildland Half Marathon and 5K is Saturday, July 28th. That's before our next meeting, and it basically benefits Woodlake Nature Center, who is a huge benefactor of field trips for all the kids in our schools, so they provide three field trips a year for grades kindergarten to, I think, fifth or sixth grade for, at no cost to Richfield Schools. So it's a great benefit for our kids, and I know a lot of teachers and Richfield community volunteer at that event. And I'm sure if you've got all of them, you could volunteer to give water to runners, unless you actually wanted to run the half marathon of 5K.
I'm 50/50.
They still are taking registration, so it's a great event and a real benefit to the schools. If there's nothing else, we will move on to future meeting dates. Monday, August 6th at 7:00 PM, a regular board meeting. And also Monday, August 20th, we will have two August meetings this year to kind of ramp up for the start of school. And the August 20th meeting will be a regular meeting, but also with public comment. Are there any suggested future agenda items?
I do want to let you know proactively that it appears that I will not be present for the August 6th meeting.
I will also be not here for the August 6th meeting.
All right, we're gonna put the pressures on, double check.
We should check with everyone.
What's your availability?
I'm here.
Mr. Ashmead? I'm here, so we just need to check in with.
If necessary, I can arrange some sort of Skype.
Okay, good to know, good to know.
We'd have to get the video available so that everyone could see us, and we could see you. With notice, I'm sure I could pull that off.
Can I put you on the giant screen, Mr. Paulus, would that be acceptable?
Well, not to those who have to look at it. I'm a small-screen kind of guy.
Small screen. So that also brings up that we will have some things that all six of us will need to be here to approve for Mr. Ashmead likely before the start of the school year, so do we think, I'll check with the, with Paula and Crystal, but does everybody else think they'll be here for the 20th?
Yeah, I got my phone with me.
I would have to check my work phone, which I don't have, so, I don't know.
All right, well, let me know so we can kind of make a plan for that, and I'll check with Paula and Crystal. Okay, so if there are no, no further future agenda items, someone could make a motion to move to closed session for superintendent evaluation and negotiations update.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will move to closed session for superintendent evaluation and negotiation updates after a short recess.